Are you happy new year? I will call the meeting to order at nine oh two AM. We're all a chatty bunch this January morning, which is nice to see that we're all full of energy and ready for the day. I'll ask everybody to stand for the singing of the National Anthem, please.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in our love sky man. Can't hold back, see both the wheel of the swell. In our love, one is for the team. A winner, he knows that's what for. One team. Seven. Can't stand on. Canada, stand on top. Stand on top.
Are there any additions to the agenda this morning?
Madam Mayor, we have no additions and no dilutions this morning.
Thank you. Counselor Kamana?
Madam Mayor, I do have an addition. I would like to add DVHTA Town Mural.
DVHTA Town Mural?
Yeah. I've sent an email to all of you this morning. Hopefully you received it.
So we'll put that under Council Items twelve point two one?
Yeah, that sounds good. We might need some time to get some information as well, so that will work well. Thank you.
Twelve point two, or twelve point, I guess, twelve point two eight? Twelve point two eight under number eleven Council Items will be DVHTA Town Mural. Did you get that, Ms. Thompson? Sorry, Mr. Vincent?
I think eleven, there's a typo error, should be eleven point.
Oh, yeah. Eleven point two eight.
So eleven point two, if we could, please, Madam Mayor.
Okay, perfect. Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the agenda for the January fifteenth twenty twenty four regular meeting of council minutes with the addition of eleven point two A DVHTA Town Mural? Counselor Sheriffs, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. Nathan? Are we okay? Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, any corrections or amendments to the December eleventh twenty twenty four regular meeting of council? Is there a member of council that'd like to adopt the December eleventh twenty twenty four regular meeting of council minutes? Counselor Clark, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. We have no proclamations this morning, no public hearings. We have one delegation that is from Staff Sergeant Ryan Hoopner, the RCMP detachment, or delegation. You're welcome to sit there this morning, too.
This is different.
Yeah, right? We're gonna mix it up this year in twenty twenty five. Welcome, Happy New Year, and yeah.
Yes, Happy New Year to you all. It feels like it's been a little while since I've been here, so.
Yeah.
So, that's like a dad joke, okay? So I'll just run through the stats quick. Next month, we'll, we're always kind of a month behind just the way our stats get out, and by the time I get them to Nancy here, so these are actually November stats, so next month when I come, I'll have basically the rap for twenty twenty four, so we can basically kind of go over what the year was, but you can see our stats are kind of trending the same. We have a six point five increase in property crime. It's kind of been trending that way. I've talked to you guys about this for a while. That really is now our mischiefs, which are still our homeless population files. When I look at, you can see, if we scroll to the next slide, you can see that we're still down our theft of motor vehicles, we're still down in our break-in enters, and we are down in our theft unders by forty-one fewer occurrences. The break-in enters in the motor vehicles, when it's five and three, we're pretty much the same as last year. But you can see we're definitely down in our thefts unders, but we are up in our property crime. That's our mischief scoring, and it's our mischief other where last year we were at sixty-nine at this time, and this year we're at one hundred and fifty-six.
Sorry, one hundred and fifty-six?
Yeah, so it's a big jump. And the other thing with, you can see the other red there that says eleven percent increase in other criminal code, that's our disturb the peace, where last year we were at sixty-two and this year we're at one hundred and seven. So there's a definite increase there, and that's how lots of our, we're getting called to banks in the morning, or different businesses, or even just outside, that's how we're scoring those files. So that's the increase there. The only other thing I noted with the stats that were trending up is in our persons crime, is our criminal harassment and uttering threats, and that is, we've seen definitely an increase in our, like, social media threats and harassment. So as our, it's funny because social media has been around for so long, but in the last couple of years, we've definitely seen a trend where people are not responsible, feel they're not responsible for the messages they send over online or texts, and so we're seeing a trend in those files increasing, and that's, people get brave when they're behind a keyboard and not in front of people, so it's funny that, because it's been around for so long, but we're definitely last, well, if you look at our uttering threats, they've basically trended up for like the last, for the last four years, and it's, it's not uttering threats face to face. It's sending messages. Other than that, the one thing that continues to trend up as well is our Mental Health Act, and that is, I've talked about that before, that's a pretty big resourcing drain on us. We're at one hundred and fifty-three, or last year we were one hundred and thirty, the year before that we're one hundred and fourteen, so we're seeing just a slow, steady incline in our mental health calls as well, and as we know, if we decide to make an apprehension on other mental health act there, we're running to Pinoka. So it's a big poll on your guys as police officers, because that's a fairly lengthy round trip. By the time you get done, they're pretty good there. When we get there, they've increased some efficiencies, so we send them a notice that we're coming, and it's decreased the wait time when we arrive there, which is good, where our wait times are thirty to an hour, which they used to be, you could sit there for a couple hours, so they've, they've done a better job with that, so that we're getting, we show up there and our prisoners are getting taken over pretty quick. But it still is a big draw on our resourcing. I do have a few highlights. We had basically a rash, in October and November, we had a rash of theft from vehicles, definitely around the downtown core, and the theater was getting hit really hard. We had identified a suspect, it's an individual who had been here in sixteen seventeen, moved away, was here for about a month in twenty twenty-three and arrested, we charged him with basically theft from vehicles. He moved away and he came back in October. So we identified him as a suspect for that, just with some of the surveillance, we couldn't pin ID, but pretty sure who it was. So we came up with a plan, proactive plan to do some surveillance on him and caught him on December third, and then we did a search warrant at his home in the Greenwood Trailer Court, which was right next to the theater, so it's a nice quick jaunt over for him to do those crimes, and seized numerous IDs that had been stolen from vehicles all over the town. Result of that search warrant, he, it's, the name is Kyle Parkhurst, and he was charged with forty-three charges. So over ten plus victims were identified in that, and, yeah, so he had been responsible, there's a night where a bunch of our drama students' vehicles that work at the theater here downtown, or practice theater, had four or five vehicles got hit there, the theater was getting hit a ton, but all the way up to vehicles parked at Whole Hardware. Basically, with Mr. Parkhurst, if it was, if your vehicle was not locked, or your valuables were visible, they were getting taken. So, I mean, forty-three charges, his girlfriend also, so I can't name his girlfriend, just by the way the charges have been sworn, I was also charged with thirty-one, but you can see how when we're a small town, one individual like that can really spike and create havoc for us for about a month. But it's a good reminder for everybody that lock your vehicles, but also tuck your valuables away. Every vehicle he hit, the purse was either visible, or the wallet was visible, or it was unlocked. So, just a good reminder, it doesn't, I mean, it's still a crime, it shouldn't be happening, but it's a good reminder, tuck your stuff away. But he is in jail, and shockingly enough, our theft from motor vehicles suddenly dropped a lot. Other update I have, I'll do a staffing update. Our sergeant position has been named. It's Corporal Dan Ferry out of Parkland Crime Reduction Unit. If you have been here long enough, Dan started in Drayton Valley, so he left, I believe, in two thousand and fifteen, and has done kind of a circle. I'll bring him to the next council meeting so he can introduce himself, but he's made his way through Red Deer, Edmonton, Parkland Detachment, and he will be arriving February fourth will be his first day as the sergeant here. So he's coming back home. He's lived in the area already commuting to Parkland, so he's super excited to close that commute down and start here. Other than that, our first shift assistant has started. Her name's Ashley Michonne, she's one of your employees, so she's just being trained right now, and we are, we have the other position advertised, we should be interviewing on that in the next couple of weeks, we've got lots of applicants, so that will be underway as well. On the constable side, we have one hard constable vacancy. When I say hard, that means it's open, and they're looking for somebody to fill, though there's lots of pressures elsewhere in the province, so I'm not sure how much we will get when we only have one. The other vacancy we have, we have one soft vacancy, that is maternity leave. Currently, it's medical, we have one of our members, she's pregnant with twins, and so she will be having those twins in the next month, so she's off now and will then be off for maternity for the next year. So that's where we're at with our vacancies. I'll do a building update. There's not actually a lot to update. I did receive a drawing that was much better than the last one. It's smaller than I hoped, so I've kicked it back, asked it some more questions. I did have a meeting this week about that, and what I've learned from that meeting is we have to continue to push to try and be a priority, because right now we're not actually priority. So I appreciate the frankness of the meeting, because I feel like before I was getting some lip service, but, yeah, I wonder at some point if Mr. Vincent and us should sit down and strategize how we're gonna push that. At the end of the day, it all comes down to dollars, and they want to know where the dollars are coming from, and, yeah, so, the drawing that I had, the price, the quote that we were given isn't astronomical, but, yeah, basically as told, there's lots of priorities, so. But that doesn't mean we can't continue to push our, our needs forward. Last thing I'll talk about is our, I'm working with Sergeant Rossing, and this is kind of his behavior a little bit more, but we're gonna bring in the agent program to Drayton, or attempt to bring the agent program to Drayton. It's basically allows us as enforcement officers to become an agent for businesses and allows us to issue ban notices ourselves and trespass people ourselves, and it cuts out that business owner from having to come to court. On the enforcement side especially, we've increased our ticketing, as you guys have asked. Most of those are getting yanked in court. I've had a discussion with our Crown Prosecutor about that. Some of that is they need members from the business to attend court, and not only do they have to attend and say they're trespass, they have to give basically proof of when they trespass that person, and it just is a burden on businesses owners that they're not super willing to do. So we are gonna cut that middleman. Businesses will be able to sign up for this program, they'll have a sticker saying that the police are agents for them, and basically it gives us the ability to then cut them out and do it ourselves. I still don't know how much success we'll have in court. Yeah, prosecutor, in my conversation yesterday, is that it's, there's not very many judges in Alberta that will send a homeless person to jail for showing up at a homeless shelter they're banned from. So they have their reasons, we have our reasons. But yeah, that's where we're at there. Other than that, I'm open to questions.
Well, thank you very much for your report. I'll open it up for questions. Counselor Clark?
Happy New Year. You know, a couple of things that I kind of am gleaning from this is, it's looking like the violent crimes are down, right? And like you said, you've changed the, kind of the look of mischief and what that actually means. Yeah, and I mean, it's, the highlight to me is just that the violent stuff's going down. Some of the numbers are low anyway, so I mean, a minor, minor bump in some of them, one way or another, but, you know, would you say that, I mean, you've kind of highlighted the fact that an individual left and came back, and, you know, he's responsible for those spikes, right? And, you know, it seems to me that you guys are pretty on top of that sort of stuff. Like you said, you've got a plan together really quick and dealt with it, right? Are there other folks in town that kind of rub that same ilk?
There are. Yeah, Drayton Valley's not violent at all, I agree, Counselor Clark. Like, we are a safe community. You know, our issues here are not the issues of same other communities where there's violence in there, struggling with that. It is our low-level mischief. It is, I mean, one hundred percent, it's, when certain offenders show up, we have a spike. We had a spike in October, November as actual break-in, break-ins, we had a few places, one of the, like, Lawrence was broken into, there's a few other actually business break-ins, they're all committed by the same individual. And he went on the run for quite a while, and eventually was actually caught by our Crime Reduction Unit in the city of Edmonton hiding. But, yeah, it's one hundred percent, it's, it's our main, our kind of higher threshold crimes are, an individual show up, whether they're known to us or not, and, and kind of suddenly spike our stats.
Counselor McGee?
Good morning, sir.
Happy New Year to you.
Nice to see you in the grocery store. That's the kind of community that we are. It's great. Anyway, two things. One, you have a target on your, on your stomach today. I'm guessing that's the new, the new cameras?
This is, yeah. So what I'm wearing here is our new body cam. If it's flashing green, it means you're not being recorded. If it's red, then you'll know.
It's kind of you, because I may or may not have asked this question, but, no. And seriously, the mental health piece, is that, have a tendency to be, much like you've talked about the prolific offender or the usual suspects, or, are we finding that as well?
Yeah, it is. It, yeah. And that's, that part's hard, because it is a revolving door, where somebody, it's basically a cycle, somebody will, will bring somebody in, they'll be deemed healthy enough to depart. Unfortunately, when they get released from wherever hospital they're at or institute they're at, there is no program that catches them. They simply get put right back to the community, to the same spot they were before. So, yeah, I'm a big believer, there's a bit of a gap there, where when they are sent in a cab back to Drayton, they're put back into the same position they were before, there's no, no follow-up program or someplace for them to go in between to continue on, if they're healthy, if they're taking their meds properly. They simply get dropped right back into the position they were prior, and it often is just a slow decline that we watch until we then get the grounds to apprehend them again.
And generally, the time spent using Pinoka as an example, how much time would I spend there?
Oh, it can range. It can be a week, it can be up to three to four weeks, but, yeah, it's, it's a wide range. We've seen as short as a week, though.
Not months?
Not normally months, that I've seen. Not ne- not normally months that I've seen here, no.
Thank you.
Counselor Kamana? Morning, happy new year. Um, a couple of questions, just going through uh, what Counselor Maggie was mentioning about um, so the revolving door, um, and um, you know, they go there, get better and then come back and same cycle here. Um, is it kind of on their side? Uh, do they have a bit of a resource issue there as well, would you think? And uh, that's why it's kind of in only a few weeks and you know, better not really better and they come back.
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I don't know, I guess that would be a question for Alberta Health, whether they, I mean, the, I would hope that it's not a resourcing concern that the doc, when the doctors make their determination, they're healthy enough to depart that facility. But I mean, they have pressures, I'm sure, like everybody else, but um, yeah. A doctor has to make that call once we apprehend them. That has to be then a doctor that makes the call that they're safe to be by themselves again. So where are they, that is up to that doctor and that institute to make that call.
Right, thank you. Um, I guess the, the second question would be the uh, uh, staff that you got, I guess, from partially from the town funding and all that. So what does it mean into your day-to-day operation and would that put more people on the ground more?
Yeah, so the, the new position is the shift assistant position. And that will offload a lot of the uh, admin work from the officers. Uh, right now their main task, we're very disclosure heavy, meaning prepping files for court. And the more equipment, these things are cool and they're a great uh, they're a great evidence collection tool. They're good to keep us accountable and keep the public accountable. But every file now that has some of this, if I catch somebody who's not in that file on this uh, on camera, we have to vet them out because if you don't have any involvement in the file, you, there's no, the accused doesn't get to see your face, doesn't get to see any of that. So there's now a huge vetting process with these. Lots of that is supported or allocated, but it does require our members currently to go through their camera footage. If they have an hour-long event, they have to go back and watch that and mark who needs to be vetted out and who doesn't. So every time we add new equipment, we add another disclosure and administrative process. So it's that catch twenty-two. But that is a lot of the stuff that our admin assistant then can take off of their plates. Even just uh, on our file system, there's a linking process to link who's involved and who's not. That'll be done by our admin assistant, doesn't have to be done by the police officer anymore. There's lots of administrative tasks that a person doesn't have to wear this uniform to do, but currently we add nobody else to do it. So the, in our, in a small unit like we are, the police officers just simply do it. So the biggest role, the biggest thing coming off their plate will be disclosure tasks. And it will open up a lot more time for them to spend out in the community doing police work.
Oh, that's fantastic, thank you very much.
Uh, so I have a couple of questions. Uh, you talked about the uttering threats. Do you find uh, Drayton Valley is a big commu- uh, Facebook community? Do you find that it's here more or are you hearing it's everywhere, the, the increase in that?
I do think Drayton Valley has a very active Facebook community. But I actually think that's probably everywhere. I, I don't know, to be honest, I haven't looked at Edson or or White Court or Hinton's, they're kind of the ones I always compare ourselves to just because that's uh, similar size and they're in our district. So I can see their stats as well so often if I, but I haven't looked specifically at that. But I do believe we have a very healthy and active Facebook community.
We do, I don't know if healthy is the
Very active.
Yeah, it's, it's very active for sure and it's unfortunate that it's gotten to where it is, where people feel that they can use it as a, as a tool to either slander, bash, spread false rumors and, and do what it is. I don't think that's what it was created for, so it's sad to see that people are using it that way. It's very unfortunate. Um, you spoke about mental health calls too, of course, we know there's always an increase. Um, with the new pillars and the new ministry that started in September, what type of support are you getting or resources? Have there been additional resources or supports been, you know, given to you or, or, or kind of thrown across your desk to say this is coming? Or what's happening there?
To be honest, I haven't seen anything, I haven't seen a change since September.
You haven't?
No, um, we still have our one pack team that operates out of Rocky. Um, but as I've talked about before, they're in our community maybe once a week. They're not, when an emerging situation or a mental health crisis happens, they're not the team that responds to that, we are. Um, they do lots of follow-up for us, but it's mostly follow-up. So if we are, it's, it's our members here that are doing the apprehensions and are going to the crisis that when it's in, when it's happening. And I have not seen any assist, like additional uh, resources added to us.
So we did have Minister Williams here uh, just before Christmas and we had, um, I thought it was a, a, an eventful and, and really good meeting with him. Um, he's very knowledgeable, very compassionate, um, knows um, everything, I think. When it comes to mental health and addiction and that, he's, he's very knowledgeable. Uh, we did talk about um, the RCMP and their role and we talked about how, you know, additional supports and things like that. And he, you know, assured us that he's going to continue to work with us. Um, so if you want to put together a list or you want to put together of things that you think that you need, you can forward that to us and then we can, as we start working more with that ministry, we can make sure that we're advocating on your behalf and pushing where you need the support and things like that. We talked about the PAC team and how it's not here and we talked about some other things, the Form Tens and things that are happening. Um, but we can't, you know, we don't know all the details, so let us know and, and we can continue to push there for you. As well as um, you had mentioned uh, the building, so building update, um, you know, pushed to be a priority. Did you get a drawing for the portables or the building, is it?
I got a drawing for the portables.
Oh, for the portables, okay. We did bring that up too, um, and we'll continue to push there, we, we keep pushing there, so yeah. We'll make sure, send us the details and it's really unfortunate when we look at the detachment here and, and what's happening and the space and everything else that it hasn't been a top priority, but we do have someone coming in February, so we'll
Yes, yes.
We'll continue
That'll be a good conversation to have.
Yeah, we'll continue pushing there. Um, one other question was, um, you spoke about the October-November theft, um, and you said that the girlfriend was charged, but she couldn't be named, why is that?
So it's just the way, um, so the, the, Kyle there had uh, just as, basically had an interim release hearing where we wanted him held in jail right away, so in, his information was sworn immediately there in December. The girlfriend hasn't, she was released and given a court date, but since the charges aren't sworn and are public record in court, I have to wait for that process to happen before I can talk about the name. Kyle's have been sworn, they're public record in court, therefore I can release that name.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Okay.
That's true.
And then when you talked about the agent program, um, I'll be excited to see that roll out. Uh, you talked about the crime prosecutor, is it the same crime prosecutor that we've been talking about over the last?
No, this is our provincial crown, so the ones we've sent letters about is our federal crown.
Or is it federal, okay.
Provincial crown.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Well, thank you very much for your report, I appreciate it and I'll hand it over to uh, Counselor McGee again for a final question.
Um, we had an interesting discussion yesterday about victim services. And the relationship that you have, um, and have had in the past. I, I understand there's been some significant changes in, in how they are able to react. Um, uh, do you have any more information on that?
Yeah, so our victim services, uh, basically, they transitioned last fall. Uh, they got away from community boards and went to a provincially funded regional board system. And uh, all victim services advocates had to, or employees had to apply and basically have their job back. Um, which are two are the same, so that's good that the referral process has changed where we used to be able to walk down the hall and hand Sandra a piece of paper or Rojé, those are our two victim service ladies. We now have to, it's a whole process and we're working with them to fix their referral system because it went from a one or two-minute thing where it was a pre-filled form in our uh, file, our record system because, you know, we use victim services a lot, to a new form that the officers have to now, took about a one-minute process and created a fifteen-minute process to do the referral. Because our referrals now go up to a main dispatch for Western Alberta District and then filter back down to Sandra instead of us just being able to give them to Sandra. I don't really know the justification for that system, other than it, it was out of Sandra's hands, out of our hands, that's the referral system. I, talking to Sandra yesterday, there is some changes coming to that because they've realized how cumbersome they made it. It has to be password protected and the passwords change every two weeks and it's, the, the members on the floor find it super frustrating. The other thing that's changed is we no longer can uh, leave victim services at uh, if we, if they come with us to a sudden death, we can no longer leave, they have to leave with us when we leave. Or we used to be able to leave that victim services with whoever's gone through that loss and they can spend time with them until their family arrives. We now either have to choose to stay for that hour, hour and a half with them or we leave and they're, they simply give them a package and leave with us. So um, I know they find that very frustrating, we also find that very frustrating. I understand there's some residences where there's safety concerns, but this is a blanket policy with no uh, thought or reasonable risk taken into consideration. We had a member at Seasons the other day that stayed an hour and a half. Because, there's no risk there, but just because they want to stay with the family until somebody else got there. But um, so yeah, there's some challenges with that. I know our victim service advocates here find some, they do find some things better. Um, just with the organization of it, but they also have challenges. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So who would we advocate or reach out to for some changes?
I can get you that, there is, because it did, that victim services is run by the Solicitor General's Office of the Province. So that came down from there. Um, they're an outside agency of the RCMP, so that was a provincial change, so I can definitely
Yeah.
And I know there are lots of meetings, I have been requested to voice our concerns. There was a meeting yesterday even with the kind of who's in charge of victims, who's in charge from our end, just uh, going through the frustrations and the changes.
Yeah, if you could uh, forward that and then just to put something else if, uh, to have a voice is we had a meeting yesterday with Star Catholic. And uh, one of the um, topics that got brought up was the uh, death at, at Holy Trinity here uh, before the holidays and how that um, service wasn't available. And where it wasn't before and they had to bring a team in from Laduke to help the staff and the students and families, you know, deal with that. And you know, that's frustrating to, to hear that we didn't have that capacity for the support for our community, right? When they most needed it and, and what we were kind of getting out of that, it was a result from the changes that were coming down, right? So even if they said they could have, at least there's something that they could put together to say those supports are available.
Yeah, yeah, they've definitely been narrowed their scope. They are, yeah, though, I don't want to get, yeah. They are now being, they're now looked as more as court navigators than just overall support.
Support, yeah, 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 if you can forward that, that and we can kind of push that along too as well and, you know, push for those changes to maybe some of the things go back, I understand that changes a lot of times for people's safety, right? And we want to be mindful and respecting, respectful of that, but we also want to, you know, make sure that, you know, like you spoke about, the things that have happened in the past, be there for the family and the support and everything is still there. Yeah, uh, any other questions? Uh, Counselor Evans?
You know, just thinking about how often uh, you and your folks uh, end up being bus drivers almost all, all the way to Pinoka. Is uh, like, is it required to be an RCMP officer in, in a one-year vehicles to transfer those people or is um, is just like secured transportation required? I, I'm, and I don't know if there's an answer to that, I'm just thinking it seems like a, a, a waste of, of your people's time doing strictly transportation. I, I'm just wondering if you've got any ideas on any work around there or?
Yeah, so the way the Mental Health Act is written, and that's kind of where we end up i- in our position we're in is there's lots of different forms that they can be arrested under. Ours for peace officer to arrest them is a Form 10. Um, and then the act states in there that after the arrest, they immediately be transported to a designated facility. So um, that peace officer arrests them, has to then bring them to that designated facility. Um, and then we turn them over to whatever is there, whoever's there. Ideally, it'd be nicer to see more Form Ones and then it falls on Alberta Health to transport, that's a doctor. But they have resourcing concerns as well with AHS and ambulances and stuff like that, because then it's an ambulance that transfers on a Form One. But if it's a Form 10, we're taking them, yeah.
Well, thank you very much for your report this morning, happy new year and um, yeah, keep up the good work. You guys are doing a fantastic job and we'll see you, uh, if we don't see you at the next council meeting, we'll see you at the meeting in February.
Sounds good, thank you all.
Okay, take care. Uh, moving along the agenda, we'll jump to our decision items. Uh, first up is nine point one is the appointment of the returning officer, it's Jennifer Stone.
Madam Mayor, is it protocol for council to accept the RCMP monthly report by resolution?
Uh, we haven't in the past, but are you looking for a motion to accept it?
I think just for the record, uh, again, that council has received the report and acknowledged it through the resolution. So if we may have a resolution to accept the Drayton Valley Municipal November twenty twenty-four detachment at a glance and crime gauges report as information?
Wonderful, is there a member of council like to make a motion to accept the RCMP delegation report as information? Uh, Counselor Clark, thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate, all in favor? That is carried. Did you capture that, Ms. Thompson? Perfect, thank you, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and members of council. Um, this morning I'm here to present the um, appointment of the returning officer for the town of Drayton Valley. So the Local Authority Election Act states that an elected authority may by resolution appoint a returning officer for the purposes of conducting elections under the act by June thirtieth of the year in which an election occurs. The returning officer ensures that the municipal election is conducted in a transparent and fair manner and in accordance with the Local Authorities Elections Act. Today administration is recommending the appointment of Pam Thiessen to be the returning officer for the town of Drayton Valley. She also uh, provided these services to the town during the twenty twenty-one uh, general election for the town.
Thank you very much, any questions for administration? Uh, sure, would you like to make a motion, Counselor Clark?
I will make the motion that council appoint Pam Thiessen as the returning officer for the town of Drayton Valley to conduct the twenty twenty-five municipal general election.
Thank you very much for that, any comment, question, debate on the motion? And I'll call the motion, all in favor, that is carried. Thank you very much, and moving on, you are presenting nine point two as well, the appointment of substitute returning officer.
Thank you, yes I am. Uh, so the Local Authority Election Act also states that an elected authority must by resolution appoint a substitute returning officer by June thirtieth in the year in which an election occurs. The purpose of appointing substitute returning officers is that if Ms. Thiessen was for some reason uh, incapable of performing the duties of a returning officer, um, we have a substitute returning officer that would step in to uh, conduct the election at that time. Um, so administration is recommending that myself, Jennifer Stone and Nancy Thompson to fill the positions of substitute returning officer for the twenty twenty-five general municipal election.
Thank you very much for that, any uh, questions for administration, Counselor Kamana?
No, I was just going to make a motion.
Going to make a motion, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I would like to make a motion that council appoint Jennifer Stone and Nancy Thompson as a substitute returning officer for the town of Drayton Valley for the twenty twenty-five general municipal election, thank you.
Thank you very much for that, any comment, question, debate on the motion? And I'll call the motion, all in favor, that is carried.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, next up is nine point three, uh, extension to the ICF agreement with Brazzo County, Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to the chair, to all members of council. In mid-November, Alberta Municipal Affairs contacted the town of Drayton Valley regarding the inter uh, municipal collaboration framework agreement. Uh, municipal collaboration framework agreement. They were encouraging municipalities, and this is municipalities across the province, to defer their negotiations. Or extend their existing ICF agreements as new legislation will be introduced. In near future and we are advised it will be introduced in the spring sitting of the legislature. During the December thirteenth joint meeting of councils, Brazzo County Council agreed to collaboratively. Extend the, uh, existing agreement until the new legislation is introduced. So both municipalities can see what the impact of the proposed changes and we are advised they will be.
Councilor McGee?
Well, I have a number of questions. Uh, do you want to, uh, do you want to approach the, uh, and just speak about it?
Come down here too, if you want to sit or you want to stand, whatever's more comfortable for you. Yeah, sometimes it's easier to sit.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome.
Morning. Okay, um, so I'm Candice Mulligan, just on behalf of the Drayton Valley Fine Arts Society. Uh, in December, we just, um, I actually just applied online, um, for an opportunity to just kind of showcase your town. In this national, uh, build a mural project that's been going on for a number of years. I don't know if we have the opportunity to pull up. A website, um, for you guys to view, or I can just kind of tell you about it and.
And, and it's called Canada Connects, is that?
It's called Canada Connects. Yeah, if we go to register.
Can we pull it up?
Yeah, register dot mural mosaic dot com will give you, um, an idea about, uh, the work that they do.
Sure, let's just bring it up and then we can. Be a little bit more familiar with what you're.
Sure.
Sharing with us. And when did you apply?
In December, they were just held this thing, um, it was just kind of open to anyone in Canada to apply. They do murals. Um, they have done global projects throughout the entire world with their murals, um, but the Canada Connects branch of this. Is, um, responsible for the murals they put out in Canada and they also do some in the United States. So, so for example, this is like the end of their campaign. Where they're, um, letting just kind of a, a host town be part of these murals and they only do five or six per year. So we just kind of threw out, uh, you know, here's what we love about Drayton Valley kind of thing, just to put our name in the running and I. Wasn't honestly expecting to hear back from them and a lady, uh, contacted me. Um, Monday in the afternoon and said, yeah, you're shortlisted. So, uh, if you have the funds and a space. We're good to go, but we make our decision on Friday. So I thought, um. I would bring it to you guys because I do think it is a good opportunity for our town. Um. Their whole idea is they've picked the, the mural of the, of the tree.
The one that was up at the top there?
Yeah, if you scroll all the way down too, there'll be a little bit of, um. Some step by step on like how they produce this, a little bit of media coverage, um, because they usually have like. The news, they have their global roots, Canada connects team come out. They have kind of an unveiling opportunity. A lot of people then kind of make this a stop along the way tourism wise to come and have a look at these murals. Um, and it is also a nice opportunity where we would have the chance to have up to two hundred of these tiles, um. Be available for our local community so that they could actually have a square in this mural. Um, so they've done different projects. They've done, um, they've been commissioned at the Vancouver, um, Olympics to have a big mural there. So they do all different ones and down at the end. Um, if you scroll all the way down, there's kind of, yeah, you see like the big trees that they do. So it would just be a different image of a tree for our town. It would be twelve by twenty four. Normally, uh, to commission something of this size would cost you over a hundred thousand dollars for the communities that, that paid to have one. Um, yeah, and I just think it would be a nice town, like, you know, not only for beautification, but just a, just a nice unity project. And of course, you know, through our society, we're. We're interested in, in things through art that connect people. So, um, I was told that if we had opportunity to the six thousand dollars that they asked just to be a host town for their mural. And, uh, we had a location or, um, two or three different location. Of to submit, uh, for them to just okay the location in town because they asked for a few requirements, like it's public access. It's not south facing. It's, um, it'll be maintained for a minimum of two years, um, at which point it can be moved, but it will definitely last at least ten years. So what they do is, um, they offer anyone in Canada, um, an opportunity to buy a tile kit. And in that kit is just, um, a color scheme, but you can basically do any picture you would like on, on the tile. And you submit back a digital image to them with your completed tile and then, um, their artist. Puts together all of these images into one large mural, which they just sort of mount on like an aluminum. Frame sort of thing for hanging. So it's, it's good to be weathered and. Yeah, just sort of something that came up, um, but they do make their decisions on Friday. Funding, um, does not seem to be, uh, as big. Uh, of a hurdle. I know that between possibly the town having interest in this and also the hotel authority, the community foundation, um. Six thousand in total. Um, well, I know that it could be a joint effort. I know that so far I've talked to the hotel authority, which they're proposing possibly a fifty fifty. We do have the, uh, option to buy a hundred and fifty extra tiles for our town at cost, which would be ten dollars. So we'll. Possibly looking for another fifteen hundred dollars, um, that we could, um, buy in tiles as well. Um, and then mostly the pressing issue is that I would need to, uh, be able to come back to them with some pictures of locations that they could, that they could approve. Um, and then they would make their final decision on Monday.
So total cost could be seventy five hundred dollars for the town. That would be cost shared between, uh, tell. That Tourism Authority and the town of Drayton Valley.
Yeah, Hotel Authority and the town of Drayton Valley or, or potentially, um, between a three way between the. Community Foundation as well, just depending on how funds need to be allocated for the project. Um, yeah, but definitely. Definitely I would leave it with, with you and how much you would want to be a part of it. And then obviously the location would be. You know, would be contingent on where, where you would have to have to possibly have it located and maintain it.
Perfect. Um, I'll just repeat what Mr. Vincent said, just because you didn't have your microphone on. So that was seventy five hundred. That could be cost shared and split then. Either, uh, between the town of Drayton Valley and Drayton Valley Tourism Hospitality or three ways with, um, Drayton Valley Community Foundation Hospitality and the town of Drayton Valley.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, um, I'm gonna go, I have some questions, but I'll go to, uh, Tom first, just because he had his hand up, uh, for some questions. Go ahead. Councilor McGee?
Good morning, Candice. Thanks. Uh, and I, I see the, the need and the, and the rush. And, um, uh, I'm absolutely in favor of it. In fact, I, I, an example would be, is that I have a building, uh. Eighty-eight clothing, uh, that has a wall, not big enough for this, but, but I want to do a mural as well. And so I would join that as a business owner, uh, in, in. I don't, could, because it does talk about if other, if you wanted to spread the, uh, the love or the wealth.
Yes.
Uh, you could do that at the same time. So I'm, I'm very much in favor of that, but my question is. Uh, have you thought about, uh, a wall? Uh, do you have anything in mind? Uh, sometimes I, I lose sight of. What kind of things can happen on walls?
Um, basically if town was, um, responsible for the maintenance and location of this public mural, it would be something where, um. It could be on a, any sort of freestanding wall on a building that was in good condition with enough public, um. Exposure basically for everyone in town to, to enjoy. So I'm thinking the Rotary Park may be part of that building that used to be used for the. The pump house or the, or the actual pool building. It could also be a freestanding, um, like structure that you just make to support. To support this mural. So it could be even at the Lions Park. It could be part of the Aquatic Center or, um. The Omniplex even as long as, as long as it has public access, it is not south facing because they don't want the sun to fade it. Um, and it is a building in good condition or something that like a structure that you've just, um, made to support it in some area like that. Even if it were somewhere, um, just like in the downtown core where, where people would have access to see it and enjoy it, not in like a parking lot or anything like that. Then I think they're pretty. Pretty open with those locations.
And we need that in the next couple of days?
I need it today, actually. I needed it yesterday, but Tracy is actually, their head administrative office is in Edmonton. So she's actually kind of. Rooting for a local place to, uh, to be in the running for this because I think the only one they have in Alberta is down in Medicine Hat through, through the years they've been doing this. So, um. Yeah, so she said it would be okay if I got her some, some photos by the end of the day for, for them to start looking at tomorrow.
Wow. Well, what fantastic news. Yeah, who would have thought, right? You applied and then this happened so quickly. That's wonderful.
Yeah, a little unexpected. I know it kind of puts everybody on the spot, but you know, if it works out and you, and you guys think it's a good opportunity for town, then, then that would be great.
Yeah, no, that's wonderful. Uh, I just have a couple of questions. Um, so you said that. Um, so have, we've been shortlisted, so we haven't been a hundred percent selected. Is that correct?
That's right. So they would look at the, the, the few kind of finalists that they have, um, that have been. You know, cleared so far to be able to host this. Um, they're going to look at their photos because basically they're just kind of looking at the criteria now. Because some of them, you know, they're ready to go, but they don't, they don't actually have locations that they would like to. Host these murals at or that they feel is an appropriate place. So I think Friday is when they would make their final decisions. I don't know how many other people are in the running, um. For, to be shortlisted for this, but yeah, it's definitely not a for sure thing. It's just something that we have to. Have to be sure on today and then, um, potentially, um, be chosen on, on Friday or Monday after they look at all the, the possible locations from the. From the remaining communities that, or cities that have been shortlisted.
Well, we know there's only one good candidate.
I know, right? This is oil country. Didn't we already like get that, uh, recognition? We should, they should put us right at the top. Um, so you spoke about a public mural. So there's only one mural, right? That is with all the tiles?
That's right.
And, and so you had said something about two hundred tiles are available, but we would get an extra hundred and fifty. So. Do people have to buy the tiles or how did the, how did the tiles work?
Yeah, so what happens is in a, in a mural this size, the twelve by twenty four, which is the largest ones they do, there's a roughly, I don't know, seven hundred or eight hundred total tiles in this. Which of course they sell to anyone across Canada that would like to be part of the project. They get their kit, they send in their image and it becomes part of this, this global mural sort of idea. But, um, as part of the hosting community, along with the six thousand dollars, um, we would be entitled to fifty free tiles that you can. Deviate however you choose with the option to also purchase at their cost of ten dollars per tile, an additional one hundred and fifty. So it doesn't. It doesn't add to how big it is. It's already, it's already its size, but they've kept up to two hundred for our community if we would like it fifty for free for hosting and, and the. Chance to purchase a hundred and fifty more.
Oh, wow, that's so amazing. Wow. Very nice. I think it's fantastic. Yeah. Uh, Councilor Clark, do you have a question?
Not such a question, but, um, I do also own a building downtown. Um. It's north facing and it faces EPEC across the path from EPEC. Um, I would offer that wall up if, uh, that were good.
And this is the building that's south of EPEC?
Yes.
Like across from the.
Cross, cross the.
That, that's funny because I measured it yesterday and it's not quite tall enough. Do you know what? I thought that would be a great space too, because it can be a publicly or, or privately owned space as long as like, you know, you know, we can. Get the mounting there and the maintenance there. Um, but yeah, because it's a twelve by twenty four mural. It, it would need a little bit more height, I think, on that one.
And if something needs to be built there, that's fine too.
Yeah, but definitely we can, we can throw them out a few locations that you guys are thinking and then if they, if they choose one to be the place where they would like to showcase it, then we would just have to go with that location.
Is the EPEC building taller? Is it big enough on the, on the south? Oh, no.
Because it's south facing. But it's south facing. That's right.
Oh, I do like the Omniplex though. Has you come down the road, maybe that?
Yeah.
You know, there's, I think there's a few, um, so you have to decide the location today.
I have to submit pictures of potential locations today. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, so would you be looking for the suggestions to come from the town? Or like, is it kind of a joint effort or?
I think if you guys will be, uh, supplying the area, if we don't have like a, a private building sort of space that we're considering, then I think, yeah, our most viable options would probably be like a, a town.
A town.
Supplied area.
Yeah.
So then, you know, if you guys would have time to come up with like three or four different location options or something, and I could take. Pictures of the areas and send them in and, and just go from there.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so Mr. Vincent, uh, would we be needing a motion then is?
Madam Mayor, most definitely. So if the town is going to be fifty fifty partners. With the Tourism, uh, uh, Authority, uh, motion will be for three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to come from council's P and G fund. And if we're going to be one third partners with the Tourism Authority and the Community Foundation. Then a motion for twenty five hundred dollars from council P and G. I leave it to council's discretion what percentage partner that they want to be in this project, but certainly administration a wholeheartedly supports this.
Okay, perfect. Is there a member of council like to take a motion? Are you wanting to make a motion or do you have a question?
I can do both.
Okay, perfect. Well, Councilor Kamana?
Sure, uh, just trying to understand about the tiles. Um, so we get fifty tiles free. Um, and the, the cost of the mural of six thousand. So.
That's right. So six thousand dollars is really what we're looking for for funding, um, regardless of how you would like to split it between, between the organizations and with that would come fifty tiles. Which you could choose to.
Sell it off.
Sell, however you would like to add those fifty that come with that. The additional a hundred and fifty. Um, I actually would like for the Drayton Valley Fine Arts Society, because they don't have a lot of opportunity for fundraising and growth to, um. Be able to, um, because it hasn't been passed by our board, but I would like for them to have the opportunity to spend the fifteen hundred dollars for the extra tiles and be able to. Sell them to people in our community or, or make some kind of fun program where a hundred and fifty extra people can be involved in this mural. So, um, it's really just about the six thousand dollars, um, that we would need guaranteed to be the hosting town. And then, you know, potentially seeing, um, what we could do with the extra hundred and fifty, but I would definitely speak for them. Like if the Drayton Valley Fine Arts Society was not comfortable. With that money and speaking for the extra tiles, I would definitely put it out to, and any of the. You know, members that are going to be part of this project so that we can, you know, keep them and have people in our community be, actually have little spaces in this mural.
So if I make a motion up to three thousand seven hundred and fifty, that, that would be okay, I think, right?
Oh, yeah, that would be lots. It's sufficient, yeah.
Sure. Sure, um.
Uh, do you have a question, uh, councillor?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest, can we just? So do the seventy five hundred, but donate those extra hundred and fifty to the Fine Arts Society to sell and you just make whatever profit off that. Essentially just donate.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that would be excellent. And then we could, you know, market and, and market it and have people involved in town with that.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah.
I like it.
Sure, uh, that, that's still the three thousand seven hundred and fifty from us, right?
So, yeah.
I'll, uh, make a motion that, um, town of Drayton Valley will contribute, uh, up to three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the. Uh, Fine Arts Society's mural project with, uh, Mural Mosaics Canada. Thank you.
Is that good? Yeah.
Is that good?
To, uh, come from the council P and G account.
Okay, to come from council's P and G account and, uh, and town will decide the location of the mural?
Okay. And if I hear from you sometime this afternoon, then, then I'll be, I'll run around and take pictures of the locations that you've, uh, put up as potentials and we'll send it in and.
Okay. Yeah, we'll decide in the next hour.
All right, thanks for your time.
Uh, okay, we just have to make the motion or we still have to get called a motion. Uh, so Ms. Thompson, did you get all of that? No? Okay. So could you, uh, repeat the motion, Councilor Kamana? Or just read it back, Ms. Thompson?
Move forward with contributing up to three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to Fine Arts Society in partnership.
With D D H T for the mural project.
The Canada Connects mural project. Funds to come from the P and G council.
From council's P and G account.
I think Omniplex would be cool. Did you get it? Do you want to read it back, please?
Administration to move forward with up to three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the Fine Arts Society in partnership with. D D H Ts for the Canada Connects project.
Mural project.
The funds coming from the council G and P account and that the town of Drayton Valley is deciding.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Councilor Kamana has made that motion. I will now call for a comment, question, debate on the motion. Councillor McGee?
Just following, so um normally, and I'm, I'm going to think on a personal basis on, 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 on the walls that we've seen already with the Bison and uh some others with the mountains and things like that, that's painted directly on the wall.
Right.
Which is quite different from what I understand this is going to be. This is tiles, then glued to the wall.
Yeah, so these are actually digital images of tiles. Tiles are just so people can actually kind of do this art and craft thing, you know, at their own home. They can paint right on the tiles and stuff like that, but they don't ask the tiles to be sent back. They just ask of a clear digital image. And then what the artist does is put all these um high-quality weatherproof images together on a sheet of basically like aluminum sheet. So when you just mount it on a building like you would like a picture in your home.
All right, okay.
Yeah, so there's no permanent effects to the building other than like the mounting equipment to hang this.
So it, on a, again, on a personal basis, if I wanted to access, um, then I needed to connect with the Fine Arts Society when you have access to tiles and, and have that conversation.
Like if you wanted to be part of the mural?
No.
Or if you wanted to?
On a, on, on my building.
Yeah, so if
Sounds to me like that's how that would work.
Yeah, if you wanted to host a mural on your building, for sure, like through this Canada Connects, this artist will commission um private murals as well, which you can decide. I think the smallest they do is an eight by eight and that starts at about twenty thousand dollars. For him to make a mural like this with, with about three hundred different images of tiles, two to three hundred in that kind of size. So, yeah, and anyone can purchase them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Wow. Uh, and then who will be hanging the mural? Is it like, would it be us? Is it the artist?
Yeah, I think I would, I would, they would ask that the town be responsible for, for the equipment. So they, they would kind of give direction in what sort of mounting equipment to use, but that you would be there with whatever.
So work together to make sure that it's not
Yeah, to make it hang properly. Yeah.
Yeah, and properly. Wonderful. Uh, so there is a motion on the floor. I've called for comment, question, debate. I think this is a fantastic opportunity for the society and for our community. Thank you for bringing it forward. Uh, it's just another, I think, way for us to be able to highlight Drayton Valley and put us on the map for being so amazing. So uh, it's, it's a great, a great idea. So thank you very much for that. Um, there is a motion on the floor and if there's no further comment, question, debate, then I'll call the motion. All in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll get back to you. Um, our administration, uh, have you got um contact information? Okay, and then we'll get back to you as soon as we can on a location and then you can get this sent.
May, maybe we take a short recess.
Yes, and we'll take a, a short recess and then we'll exchange information and move along. Thanks for coming in. Moved on to our next one here. Wow, I had a moment there. Okay, we have gone through um the council uh department reports. We've gone, gone through the council items. Moving along to number twelve, information item. We have three information items this morning. Uh, Brazzo Foundation Meeting Minutes, Minister Schultz regarding C E T C, uh, the Q four town of Drayton Valley Department Reports. Any questions uh on any of the information items or the department reports? Uh, Mr. Vincent?
Madam Mayor, if I uh might just briefly go through the department reports. I know council is aware and acknowledges, but I think it's worth restating and emphasizing. The administration for the town of Drayton Valley is very dedicated and conscientious group of civic servants who have a vested interest in serving the residents and citizens of our community. Our objective is the gold standard of municipal organizational excellence. It is with great pride, we report on a quarterly basis to council and the residents on the significant accomplishments which are achieved in the reporting period. We're pleased to present the Q four department reports and it is also the wrap-up report for twenty twenty-four for councils and the residents' information and uh, the reference. We have in the uh submission, first of all, the report from the CEO's office, which cover human resources and communications. I'd be pleased to answer any questions council might have on this portion of the report.
Uh, councillor Clark?
Um, so we were just looking, uh, this is the Q four report, correct?
That's correct.
Um, you know, just looking at the um, the turnover analysis. Uh, new hires, sixty-eight total, uh, calling them terminations, sixty. So we had net eight new folks in twenty twenty-four. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Um, and it looks like uh most that left were in community and rec followed by municipal services and then it's mirrored in um, uh, you know, the ads, I guess. Um, are we expecting the same sort of turnover or, or is that typical or is that better or worse?
Well, the normal turnover, uh, turnover, Madam Mayor, through the Chair to councillor Clark and all of members of council, a healthy turnover for most organizations is ten to fifteen percent. We're double that. Certainly, I think we have now hit an equilibrium that uh we filled a number of positions that were vacant. Uh, we did go through a period of uh considerable turmoil in the organization last couple of years. And uh, so if you look at the stats uh from twenty twenty-three, where, which was uh twenty-seven point eight five, about the same in twenty twenty-four, my forecast for twenty twenty-five is that we'll be in the normal range of ten to fifteen percent, which will be very healthy. So you know, it's uh, I think the only uh major area, we're looking at new hires, of course. I think council once again for approving the new positions in twenty twenty-five budget. So that'll have some impact on those percentages. And the key position will be filling the office of the CEO at some time. So uh, I think uh we're going to be looking forward to enjoying a period of stability moving forward.
Any other questions?
Second portion of the report is a protective services uh report that includes fire services and enforcement services. And uh, a very excellent report uh put together by um general manager and fire chief, uh, Tom Thompson. And certainly if there's any questions with regards to that report, uh, our general manager is here to uh provide those uh answers for any questions.
Any questions on? Any questions on Protective Services?
If not, move on.
Counselor Gomana, do you have a question?
Sure, go ahead, sir.
No worries, no, thank you. Just my understanding, you know, a little while back, the conversation was regarding about motor vehicle collisions. Was that, you know, whether you're going first or paramedics coming first and stuff like that. Has that been improved at all, or is it still the same?
Pretty much the same.
Pretty much the same. Okay. I think we've written a few times to advocate for that. Do you think we should advocate again, or is it kind of sorted out?
I think always adding, yeah, but always adding doesn't hurt. For things like that. I know that they were making changes to the city, but that has not expanded out to the room where. So see, see how.
How it goes, okay, thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Counselor McGee?
Memorial Park Project, sorry, Tom. The Memorial Park Project, we can just describe to me what we can expect in the spring.
So in regards to the Memorial Park, we are just about completed. We, we still have to put the, the old antique fire truck on, on that piece of land. And then we, then we have a monument that has to go up, which will display the plaques of, which will describe kind of the purpose of the park, but also will, will recognize the, the people that contributed to the park. So that, that will be done. So we're, we're very close to being completed. And once that's done, then we'll, we'll do a bit of a ribbon cutting and then it'll be open for the public to enjoy. We have to wait a little bit till the, till the snow goes away, so in the early spring.
Yep. Are you, are we moving to enforcement services while you're there?
Sure.
Sure, go ahead, yeah.
Are there other questions on Fire Department?
No, go ahead.
Okay, seeing on the, what I'm thinking about in the enforcement services, the top three areas that generated the most complaints were animal control, community standards, and the seven hundred and twelve violation tickets. So in my mind, I was thinking about what does that constitute for revenue? Do we know what the revenue count is?
We do, I don't have that in front of me, but we do have those numbers. I don't know if Alvira has that or not, but we do have that.
One moment. Okay, and so I'm thinking also of my walk today. And I saw a young lady out today and yesterday doing some sidewalk clearing. And she was pounding on the ice across from DV Insurance and E-PAC. And just, I just thought, my goodness, that's, that's a lot of work. And so she, she's done that, and I find that, you know. And as, as Bern and I had an exchange, that people generally come by and say, nicely done, thank you. It's, but it seemed to me, I thought, if we have things with gears and switches and things that do that, that you wouldn't be able to have to do this anymore. But I don't know, right? Although she enjoyed it, I know that. She was pounding away at that ice, and I thought, oh, my goodness. Okay, you can.
I don't have any comments on that. And that's, is that what we got in revenue?
So far, forty-five, but we haven't done anything. We have forty-two, one second, sixty cents.
So to this point, we're at approximately forty-five thousand. And we, but we, it's still, we still haven't wrapped up year end yet, so. Last year was approximately a hundred thousand.
Hundred?
In twenty twenty-three.
Okay. That's all my questions, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, through the Chair to all of council, next is the municipal operations report. And includes the GM's report, water, wastewater, Public Works, Parks, landfill, asset, asset management GIS. And also have included the 2025 goals, which is very forward-thinking on behalf of the department. If there's any questions on that report, be pleased to answer them.
Any questions? Counselor McGee?
I read the report. So the pilot project at the water treatment plant for artificial intelligence. We, we've been monitoring that, how's that? Is it?
Oh, we're making some, we're making some very good headway. And Pat and I, we're gonna, we're gonna have a meeting with them here shortly in, in January. I can't speak too much about the pilot as I have signed an NDA. But I can speak to the, like, general concept of the pilot, which is trying to find operational efficiencies through artificial intelligence, which has been already released to the public. I think I sent you guys the article already on that last year, so. But it is, is well underway and hoping for some exciting news to come to you guys shortly by the team that's, that's doing the pilot.
Okay. It's exciting.
It is. Counselor Gomana?
Can I ask, hello, thank you. Just, did they tell us why they picked our water treatment plant? Because is it more advanced than others, or?
So, so when the plant was being built, the reason it's called the Center for Water Intelligence was surrounded by the concept of we want to be innovative and we wanted to have this as a, as a teaching moment for the province. So with that came the artificial intelligence pilot project that we launched quite a while ago, pre-COVID. It was, it was really set up during COVID, but it kind of stalled because of, of COVID. But that was always the intent, was to make this an education center for, for the public and for the love of Alberta. It's our hope.
Oh, that's fantastic, thank you.
Counselor Evans?
Shelley, you conducted airspace analysis and identified additional available space within cells that were identified as full. So you found a little, little more space for us to take advantage of?
Absolutely. So that, that was really positive news. With our new approval, there's some, some difference, different airspace allowances. So that's, that's how that kind of came about when we did the airspace analysis and compared it to what our new approval states. We have an additional, I think it was three meters that we can do on, on the cells. For cell four, from four A to E. So we've got, we've got some additional room there. We're not going to be implementing, moving back to those locations probably until we identify, we have to get some slope work done over there and, and get them ready to allow the public to go back up there to, to start dumping again. But yes, we did find additional space there, so we might as well utilize it.
Yeah, yeah, you betcha. Okay, thank you, that's, yeah, that's good news.
Counselor McGee, you have another question?
Just moving into the highlights of Public Works. So we hired a new Public Works and Parks manager, and that's.
Call.
Call, call, okay, that's, that, that was the question. We built a road into the landfill, inside the landfill, our own road. That, that's all budgeted, we had money, we just do those things, right?
Correct, correct.
Then the parking curbs within the Omni Flex, there was some public response. Has that response quietened down?
It, it absolutely has. We haven't been getting the complaints we, we were getting. We did anchor majority of those, the ones that we could. There's a couple more that we still do need to anchor. Right now, they're frozen, so they're not moving. But we, we do still have some additional work in there. But yeah, we, we have had less complaints about it now.
Okay, I think that's it for Public Works. Then we go into Parks, right? So that's a different avenue, thank you.
Yep.
Super. Madam Mayor, the next portion of our report is Community and Recreation Services. So that covers the Omni Plugs, Aquatic Center, Facility Maintenance, also ECDC, and Community Services. Administration will be pleased to answer any questions and provide any clarifications that members of council may require or wish.
Any questions for Community and Recreation Services? Counselor McGee?
Hired a lead hand for Parks Operations. Do we know who that is? Is that? Tiana. And is Tiana new, or if she was part of our operation and she just moved up? Okay. So the other thing about the obtained six thousand three hundred sponsorships from local businesses, generous donation of flowers and shrubs from Wildflower. How do we acknowledge that? And, and, you know, because it's, I think it's really important that we, anything that we receive in, in kind or any of those, we need to acknowledge that. So how do we do that?
We did put out a post acknowledging the, the donation. And I think, I think the mayor did one separate as well.
Did a thank you and.
And, I mean, we always show our gratitude to them with us, who we, who we deal with, with our flowers.
And we have little signs that, proud sponsor of.
Yeah.
Okay, and does that feel comfortable enough? Is it enough?
Oh, yeah, it's, we seem to have got quite a good response this year, and we're hoping to get even better next year. So, yeah, I, I think it's definitely, we're going in the right direction, for sure.
Okay. Through the landfill, you can answer. We, we didn't receive any Jasper waste.
Not yet, no.
That possibly still could happen, though, right?
It could. I, I do feel like we are quite a ways away that they'll probably utilize Hinton mostly. And they're, they're all set up there to accept pretty much all of it. So we haven't heard that they're going to be, become in our direction yet. But we're still ready for it if we have to.
And for some time now, we, we haven't heard from Metalnecks. And so they are taking some of our, our concretes and maybe metal, I have no idea. But I assume their, their operation is running and they're making money. I, I don't know that, but so it's time probably to talk to Mike and say how you do it, right?
I, I, I'm in contact with them quite frequent. Our agreement is coming up this year with them, so we'll have to revisit a new agreement with Metalnecks. But, yeah, it's, it's been going well with them.
Okay, thanks.
Good, yeah. Everything, any, anybody else have any comments for Shelley while she's here? Nope, okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to Community Services and Recreation. As Hans walks down, I can already ask him a question and, and say, do you want to tell us a little bit about the new sound system? I know that it was installed, what is the feedback? And I know it's not what we had talked about, hanging in the middle. So I, I did get a chance to hear it, and it was a lot different than before. So do you want to share with us kind of the, the improvements?
Thank you for that opportunity, Chair and through the rest of council. So yes, with the Drayton Valley Thunder New Management Team, we worked on the reconfiguration of that system and adding the base speakers to it. So now it's up and running in the configuration that it should have, and it's way better. So we get from the public and the feedback from our user groups that it is good. Of course, we have to make sure that they don't, let's say, use it in a way that they will blow up our ears slash our system again. But we have safety in, in place.
Wonderful, thank you. I think when I was there and I was hearing the speakers, we were there for the, what was the game, Colin? The hockey hooky. And I think that the screaming from all the elementary kids was a lot louder than the speakers. So I didn't quite get the, the full effect of, of the speakers that day. Any questions in regards to the report of Recreation and Community Services? Counselor Clark?
Couple things. One, just looking at the total works, Fitness Center revenue, it's like we've nearly doubled year over year, and it looks like mostly due to the Fitness Center. What are we, what are we doing different there?
Thank you for that question. So the biggest difference, of course, is that you still maintain your fees to a level that it's, let's say, with the market going up, so been increased a little bit. The biggest thing is that our clientele after COVID is coming back. So we are back basically to our pre-COVID levels. And that's reflected in our increasing revenue over time. And we are able to maintain and retain the, we call them the instructors, the people that provide the instruction at the center as well. So it's great to see that, but it's basically back to our previous levels, and it has an increase over the last couple of years.
Perfect. And then just one other thing that caught my eye here was under Public Works and the mud jack to lift fallen floor and corners. Are you guys actually using mud, or is it going to be the poly or the foam?
Thank you for that. So technically, it's the polyfoam, it's the new type that you use for mud jacking. It's still called mud jacking, but it's a polyfoam material.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, my experience with the mud is you're injecting liquid under there, right? And when it freezes, it just heaves more, so thank you.
You're, I see here goals for 2025, working on the FCM and MGF grant. When is the deadline? And how hopeful are we that we can receive some funding for the current ice plant or for the ice plant?
Thank you for that question. So based on the grants that are already out, we have to apply here in 2026 to be successful because basically it's grants that have to be awarded slash started in 2026. That means that we now utilize the pre-phase of it, and that means our feasibility study in 2025. The feasibility study determines, of course, a big portion of the application success after that. We work with the same engineering company that does that with us. So it's 2025, the application. In 2025, we will know that we are successful for 2026 project.
Perfect. Any other questions, Recreation Community Services? Counselor McGee?
One only, and that is Silver Seventy, it happened on the first of January. Have we seen the, like, I don't see it posted or anything. I don't even know if anybody knows, but it's pretty spectacular, so.
Thank you for that question, Counselor McGee, and through the Chair to the rest of council. So it has been posted, it's known to, let's say, on Facebook, on, on social media. The word of mouth, especially, of course, when we talk about demographics, is the biggest win in this case. So we have seen uptake, people are coming out. And of course, for sure, the people that were looking into, this is a change. So what does that mean? Because I already bought a membership. We address that, of course, with refunds, because, yeah, same as you become seventy. That's an important thing, but if you're already seventy and you are a frequent visitor of the Aquatic Center. So we dealt with that as well at this moment. So people are knowing about it, word of mouth is very important, so, yeah, spread the word.
Yeah, I've been hearing a lot of positive feedback. I've had a, a couple sixty-nine-year-olds come up to me and said that they're just not quite there, that they can't wait. I don't hear that a lot, that they're looking forward to their seventieth birthday so they can utilize that. Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. The camera project, Hans, how's, what's the status of that now? Is it?
So I'm assuming you asked for the camera system upgrades that we did in the facilities ourself. Thank you for that question. It's, of course, something that with Protective Services is the bigger thing, because we talk about camera project that happened outside as well and our, let's say, public safety in that case. So for the facilities itself, we were able to install a couple more camera system inside and align that with policy and making sure that everything is in place with Cody, because Cody is basically the forerunner of that camera system outside in our public spaces. So so far, we have enough cameras now inside our facilities to make sure that we support the safety of our community.
Okay, thank you. So the outside is with Cody?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. How's our affordable housing? All of them been rented out? And did the, the last unit that had to do some remodeling, is it back on the market?
Yeah, thank you for that question, and through to the rest of council as well, to the Chair. When I printed off my package from the public shared agenda package, I saw that the Community Services slash FCSS portion was dropped off from the agenda package. I'm not sure if that's for you, but we'll make sure that we distributed that to council, of course, afterwards, if that's the case. Our vacancy rate basically is one percent, just over one percent, which means basically the transition. basically the transition for all the, uh, affordable housing program that we monitor and do. Um, that means we are full, so those units that had to, uh, have a certain, let's say, temporary renovation happening, it's all done, they are all filled. So one percent is a very low number for, uh, uh, vacancy because that's just a transition between a new, uh, renter, for instance.
Right, yeah, I'm sure you have a waiting list as well for that, right?
That's correct and we can use.
Ten of pods, uh, uh, needed to be closed for a day or so, um, uh, can, can you chat about that or are we, we're into new business here, it doesn't really reflect here, but I don't know when they're, you'll be able to sit in the chair again, but.
No, thank you so much. Uh, we can answer that question down here, uh, Councilor McGee and through the Chair to the rest of council. So the pods have been closed, uh, it was one night overnight that we had to close them all and the next night we still had half of them, uh, not open. Uh, we had a technical difficulty with our camera system. Uh, the camera system is one, the automatic opening of the doors and the code system is the other one, of course. So we were not able for one night to close the, the pods themselves, so they could not go in and be secured for the rest of the night because all the lock system was compromised. So we worked with that hard, of course. We had to skip one night, we monitored that and we tell the province that, of course, because we have to, we have to report on it, but we were able to, uh, the next night have half of the pods open and now they're all, uh, functioning. I think there's one that we are still struggling with.
If I'm a regular user, would we have been able to accommodate them or it's, sorry, it's closed?
Um, s- uh, at that moment, basically it's, sorry, it's closed, uh, we were not able to accommodate. It was the night that we, uh, were back to almost zero overnight, we had the cold snap, uh, about a week and a half, two weeks ago, so it was after that cold snap. Um, so all our users, they were, word of mouth again, uh, informed pretty fast, uh, and they find there are other places, so they were able to be, let's say, accommodated, they, uh, couch served, they find other places, but, uh, we were open the next night again for more than half of them and now I think one or two.
Thank you.
Okay, wonderful, moving along. Thank you very much.
Final, uh, part of our report is, uh, corporate services, which includes finance, uh, information technology as well as General Manager's Office. I believe that this, uh, was circulated, it was not part of the original agenda package and so may not have had, uh, the opportunity to read it as thoroughly as the other reports, but we will ensure that it's part and parcel of the complete report in the future. So if there's any questions, uh, with regards to that, be pleased to respond.
If there's no further questions, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion to accept the information items? Council Evans, thank you very much. Uh, all in favor?
Both.
I'm sorry. Uh, did you want to make that motion, uh, to speak it actually instead of me just saying yeah?
No, that, that, that's fine, I'll, I'll just, well, here, I'll, I'll just.
Make a comment, how's that?
I don't know if we have, oh yeah, we do have a motion up there that.
Motion up there?
Yeah.
Anyway, I, I'm, I'm fine with just accepting the motion. I just wanted to, uh, uh, say that looking at the twenty twenty four accomplishments, uh, uh, just want to thank our managers and, and, and our staff in general. I think we're moving along, uh, in the right direction and, uh, we've got some good people, uh, building a, a, a well-run municipality, so, uh, kudos to all of you, thank you. And I'll just make the motion and.
Thank you very, thank you very much for your motion and thank you very much for your comment and I would echo that. Thank you very much, everyone, for your hard work and, uh, looking forward to twenty twenty five. Uh, Council Evans has put the motion on the floor to accept all information items and department reports as information. I'll now call the motion, all in favor. That is carried. Uh, we will move into closed session. Is there a member of council that would like to move us into closed session with the motion that is up on the screen, please? Councilor Clark?
Uh, well, we're just, Mill and I are just carrying the load here today, so, uh, I'll move that council move into closed session at, uh, ten fifty eight according to FOIP section sixteen one B and section sixteen one CI.
Thank you very much for that, all in favor. That is carried.
Or you should. And we'll have, I'm closed, right, make sure. I'm going somewhere.
Uh, I'll make the motion that council accept the report as information.
Any comment, question, debate on the motion? And I'll call the motion, all in favor. That is carried. Uh, is there a member of council that would like to make the, uh, second motion? Council Sheriffs?
I'll make a motion that council direct administration to pursue funding from Alberta Health to undertake a community health needs assessment.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? I'll call the motion, all in favor. That is carried. Uh, and that wraps up our agenda for the day and we will adjourn the meeting at eleven twenty eight.